The other good thing is that the formats of these various forms vary from time to time, so that keeps me on my toes. And I have been known to talk for a spell, so 15 minutes is a good amount of time. I hope I won't take up all of that, because I think the most important part of the morning and the afternoon is your questions and you getting to know us a little bit better. There's some biographical information on the chamber flyer on the table, so I won't go into that. And I want to express gratitude to the Chamber for having both of us here, because you need to know as much as you can know about the people that you're going to hire to be a part of the Board of County Commissioners for the next four years. And I'm finishing up, as you know, my first term, and I am a candidate for reelection, and I commit your vote and your support. And I want to say that upfront, just so I don't forget to say it on the back end. Three things, three points, I think there's some law someplace that says a candidate must have three points. So my three are: leadership experience, both in the military, the federal government, and in eight years almost of elected office, first at the Port, and second at the Board of County Commissioners for the past eight years, just about as much time as my wife and I have lived here in Clowdon County. And leadership is not just about making headlines in the newspapers. Leadership is about values, principles, and results. Leadership always has an object or an objective in mind. The second thing I want to talk about is stress and focus on Clowdon County's economy and the number of good-paying jobs here. If you look at the statistics, as I do, I'm a bit of a numbers nerd, Jim Jones, and I try to outdo each other on out-analyzing whatever particular problem that we've ever faced with, either a budget problem or whatever. The median age in our county continues to creep up. The number of people with a paycheck and the number of people looking for a paycheck continues to go down slowly. There are some good signs, and very healthy signs. We see sales tax collections, both in the county government and in the Cloudy-Clown Transit Award, on which I sit as a member, going up over the last several years. So that means there is, at least in terms of taxable events, sales taxable events, there's a growing number of those, or a growing value of those, over the last several years. And that's a very good thing, because that means somebody is making some money because they're collecting those taxes. There are also kind of clouds that we've seen, there are four lumber mills, sawmills, that have closed over the last, oh, a year or so, let's say. And so there is a definite need to focus on the natural resource, particularly the forest products industry segment of our economy. That's what I have done for the last eight years, on any and all things that increase median household income, per capita income, however you want to measure that, whichever statistic you prefer. In order to keep our kids here, the ones that want to stay here, raise a family, buy a family asset such as a house, and raise their kids here and send them to school here. That's the overall objective that I've been striving for. Government has a role in that, of course, but government doesn't create an economy. An economy is organic in nature. It's a system of American private enterprise. People with good ideas get financing for them, start a business, grow a business, hire more people. They get good ideas, split off, form their businesses. That's the way that the American economy has functioned from the very beginning in the 1600s. People came here looking for opportunity, and people come here today looking for opportunity. And Clowdon County citizens are no different. We look for that opportunity here as well. A piece that government plays is to facilitate that and to stay out of the way as much as possible. So that's my, that has been my focus for the last eight years, and if you hire me again as a county commissioner, that will continue to be my focus. As was mentioned earlier, we just came from a groundbreaking, symbolically so, for their Composites Recycling Technology Center. That's an example of the kinds of things that government can do to help create the infrastructure that the private sector can use to do business on top of, and create jobs and create wealth in the community. So that is, that's a central focus of my time so far and will continue to be. The last, and it kind of follows the second, the last point I would make is that I was able to get elected to a statewide policy board, the Board of Natural Resources, which has to do with policies for harvest, timber harvest on state-owned lands. Amongst those state-owned lands, there are some 93,000 acres here in Clowdon County that are managed by the Department of Natural Resources in trust for the county, and various sundry junior taxing districts. If you have a property tax levy, and if you're a fire district, or a pool district, or whatever kind of district, you get a share in the revenue that comes from harvesting trees on that 93,000 acres. So what I want to do as a member of that board, and not only just for Clowdon County, but for all the other 21 counties that have such lands, I want to get the rate of return off of those lands, the rate of economic return, the rate of revenue return off of those lands, up as high as it possibly can be on an ongoing basis. You do that by judicious and wise policy, and the result of that is people working in the woods. The industry has changed, and it will continue to change, and there will probably be far less, far fewer people employed in that industry, but they will be employed in high-skill, high-paying jobs, as they are right now. And so that's a good thing for our county. That's one of the great economic assets that Clowdon County has amongst others, and we need to maximize the return on that. A lot of private lands, of course, and that's what businesses do. They maximize their rate of return on their assets on an ongoing basis, so they can continue in business on into the future. That's what I want to do for Clowdon County and the other 20 counties as well. Big task, a lot of controversy. My sense of timing is impeccable, because I got on the board just as when the board was starting to consider some very weighty policy decisions that will endure for the next 10 years. Then we can go to sleep after we get those decisions done, and it'll just be boring and routine. But I always seem to jump into the deep end of the pool, and this occasion is no different. So that's my, that's my message to you. You and I know each other. I've been here in your midst for the last eight years, and I certainly do look forward to your questions and trying to be able to answer them in a way that's meaningful to you. Thank you again, Chamber, for your invitation.
My name is Mark Hosias. I'm thrilled to be here today as a candidate for Clowdon County Commissioner. And as Jim, I also appreciate the unusual format. So many of the organizations have a very similar way of doing things, and it's nice to have a few extra minutes. So thank you for the invite to be here. Many of you don't know me, and so I am going to take just my first couple moments here and tell you a little bit about my background, particularly as it applies to this position that I'm seeking. After graduating from college, I had about 12 years' worth of work in the nonprofit world, nonprofit management, nonprofit fund development. The highlights of that part of my career were working as Director of Plan Giving for Virginia Mason Health System. That actually provided my introduction to the peninsula back in the mid-'90s. Many of you probably remember Virginia Mason used to have clinics out here, remember not very fondly when they left. But for me, that was a fantastic way to be introduced to the peninsula all those years ago. Also, I served for a period of time as lead partner in a group called Social Venture Partners. This was a groundbreaking philanthropy organization that worked to take some of the tenants of venture capitalism and turn those toward philanthropy. And that experience provided me with my first grounding in both the challenges and the power of collaboration and collaborative leadership. About 10 years ago, a little over 10 years ago, my wife and I moved to the Squim area to open a business. And in the last 10 years, we've owned two independent businesses. The first was a wholesale and retail plant in produce business. We were most well-known for the Red Rooster Grocery, which was a small retail in downtown Squim. We were open for just shy of five years, and our specialty at the Red Rooster Grocery was promoting and selling local food products. And although our store was small, we actively circulated hundreds of thousands of dollars through the local food economy during the years that we were open. And as a business owner, I understand very much, or as a former business owner, I understand very much both the challenges that business owners face here on the peninsula, but more so than that, the possibilities and the power that local businesses have to transform our community. And that's what I'm really excited about. I currently serve as Executive Director of the Squim Food Bank, and am pleased to be back in the nonprofit world after a 10-year break. So when I'm out campaigning, people often ask me two questions. One of them is, "Well, what does a county commissioner do?" And I try and explain that in two different ways. One is, "Well, the county commissioner serves as both the executive and the legislative branch of the county government, and they're in charge of the budget." And that's true. And being in charge of the budget means ensuring that there's sufficient revenue coming in to meet all of our obligations, and it also means setting priorities. But the other way that I describe the job of county commissioner is, it's a job of our county commissioners to live up to and find ways to put into action our county's values. Our citizens have enumerated a number of values that they expect our leaders to uphold, their words and concepts such as cooperation, accountability, collaboration, partnership, customer service. And as a nonprofit professional, I think in terms of values and how to apply values to real life. And so I think that's really the better way to look at the job of county commissioner. Next, people say, "Well, why on earth would you want to run for a position like that?" And after telling them that I'm a glutton for punishment, that I enjoy doing things the hard way, I usually say, "You know, well, for a couple of pretty specific reasons. One, I'm concerned about our county budget. I'm concerned about the financial future of our county. My opponent is running on his support and enthusiasm for a cut in the county's portion of our sales tax. And while I think that that might make a good election year slogan, I question whether that really has a positive impact in terms of business and personal economics around the county. It's a pretty dilute impact on any individual person, but it puts a significant hold in the county budget. And I am happy to see that sales tax receipts are coming in stronger than anticipated, the economy is turning around. That's really good news. But we're still looking at a budget deficit for 2016, at least according to the last projections I've seen. And we're looking at, that doesn't even include over $2 million worth of additional requests from department heads that we're expecting. So I'm a little concerned about the future of our county's financial state. I also don't believe that my opponent, and that our leaders in general, are doing a good enough job living up to the values that we expect and that we have asked them to uphold. For example, my opponent is on record as, when referring to how to cajole the Department of Energy along, excuse me, the Department of Ecology along, to achieve some changes to the Dudgeonist Water Rule as motivating them by pulling out the cattle prod. And, you know, that's one way to look at things, but to me, that's not indicative of a very collaborative type of engagement. My opponent recently appointed a friend as a pro-Tim Commissioner to take a vote, a specific vote on a partisan issue. When I look at doing something like that, I don't really see how that's very, being very accountable to the citizens of the county. At least from my perspective, it's not. My opponent has led the charge to find a legal solution to the dispute that the Board of Commissioners had with the treasurer over the past number of months, when given multiple options for avoiding that. Now, I look at that, and I don't find that to be very cooperative behavior, so I'm concerned that our leaders are not living up to the values that we expect them to uphold. I'm ready for commissioner, because I think I can do a better job here in some way. I have a D after my name, but I consider myself a pragmatist, not a partisan, and that is how I conduct myself. I'm a collaborative leader, and I believe that collaborative leadership achieves better results, and I'll give you just one example. I mentioned water earlier. I think water and the availability of access to water is probably the most significant long-term strategic issue for the county. First, we need to acknowledge that there might be a problem with having enough water in the future. We're expecting that due to the impacts of global climate change, there's going to be less snowpack, we're going to have warmer winters, we're hoping more people move to the peninsula. So when you put those factors together, we've got limited resource, it's likely to be more limited in the future, and we've got more people coming. To me, that means we need to be thinking pretty specifically about that and planning for that future. I don't think it's enough to say and to believe that Mother Nature will provide, because she always has. I don't think it's enough to look at what trends may or may not have been in the past and say that it's just going to be like that from here on out. We don't know what the future is going to hold, but we should be planning for it. I met not long ago with Mike Gallagher from the Department of Ecology, who's primarily in charge of fixing inconsistency in the Dudgeonist Water Rule that's causing so much trouble on the eastern end of the county, and asked him, "Where's the leverage? What could we do to actually make some progress here?" It may go to court, and if that's the way that it ends up, then once again, a judge, someone not here in Clowdon County, will be deciding. But I don't think that's the best approach. I think that what we need to do is get the Department of Ecology around the table. I think we need to get the Washington Water Trust around the table. I know Amanda Cronin, who is the representative from the Water Trust who's engaged in this issue.
Two minutes.
Two minutes? All right, thank you. And I know the other partners as well. And sitting down, working together, achieving a solution, staying out of court, is the way to make progress. My main priority as commissioner is building a local vibrant economy, and I think we need to take a look at that from a lot of different perspectives. We need to think more broadly than just reorganizing the EDC. We need to look at other economic development engines in the county, like the WSU extension and restoring their funding. We need to focus on issues that aren't traditionally associated with economic development, like community health. Many of you in your businesses may be struggling with homelessness, or drug use, or the effects that those have on your employees and your business environment. We need to focus on that. We need to take better advantage of Peninsula College and programs such as the Composites Recycling Technology Center that take advantage of our natural resources. The county's job is not to coordinate the economy, but the county's job is to make sure that all of the players who are engaged in economic development are working from the same page, from the same script, and moving in the same direction. And I very much believe that that is incumbent upon the county to make sure that we're doing everything we can to move in that direction. The most important thing that I'm here to talk about is citizen engagement. All of us are constantly separated from our government. We're discouraged from participating. And I think not only is that a shame, but I think that that achieves worse results. I think that we need to actively reach out to individual citizens, stakeholders, other governmental organizations, nonprofits, all stakeholders, and make sure that they feel they have an active voice, and that when we're talking about a subject that relates to their business, that they're going to have a stake in the outcome and be held accountable for the results. That's how we move forward. I have a history of collaborative leadership. I have a history of successful leadership in the county. Again, I thank you very much for being here, and I very much hope to earn your vote in November. Thank you.
Five minutes. We'll take less. Let me just, there's so much to say in so little time, but two things. Number one, the county's general fund budget, the thing that funds all the normal activities of county government that you think of other than roads, is certainly not in deficit. That was an unfortunate headline, and I will take this opportunity to fire an arrow at the two publishers, and I do that with some trepidation, because that's a dangerous thing to do. The preliminary budget, which is the first stage of the county's budget, always is consumptive of revenue, or, excuse me, reserves, because the first stage of the budget is always what you did last year, priced in next year's dollars. So that's just, that's just the way it works. So now the job of the county commissioners starts, figuring out how to hone that over and get the budget into balance, which we are required to do by county ordinance, county charter, state law, and the state constitution. So it always looks terrible when you start, and then the commissioners do their job and get the budget and the priorities set the way they need to be for the next year. So take heart that we will do our jobs, and you'll have a county government that functions in 2016. The second major point is with respect to the science behind climate change, and the climate does change, there's no doubt about that. There is a climate, and it does change. But let me read a couple of sentences from the 2013 Physical Science Report by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. That's the UN body that takes scientists all over the world and tries to distill what their understanding of the actual things that are happening on a global scale. The policymakers, the governments, are the ones that write the recommendations. Central fact, the climate change report from the UN body was written by policymakers, not scientists. Policymakers always have an agenda. But here's what the scientists say about their work. This is found on page 743. And I'll just read a couple of sentences. This is with respect to the models that predict surface temperatures in the future. Most simulations of the historical period do not reproduce the observed reduction, the observed reduction in global mean surface warming trends over the last 10 to 15 years. And the second sentence is, "Most, though not all, models overestimate the observed warming trend in the tropical troposphere over the last 30 years, and tend to underestimate the longer-term, long-term lower stratospheric cooling trend." So in plain English, that means the surface temperature models don't work as far as their predictive ability as against observed climate information, observed temperature data over the last 10, 15 years or so. So how can we plan with any certainty if the scientists say that their models don't work about the central issue with this thing called climate change or global warming, whichever you prefer? So yes, it is wise to think ahead, but it is wisest to use data and not conjecture.
Well, I don't know that I want to spend my whole time having an argument over the legitimacy of global climate change. However, I would say that there's entire villages on the other side of the peninsula that are already trying to figure out how to move themselves farther away from the shore, because sea levels are rising. There's shellfish farmers who are wondering what their future holds, because the oceans are acidifying. And while nobody thinks that this year's drought is indicative of what's going to happen every year from here on out, most people agree, most scientists agree, that we expect what's coming. And I don't think it's good enough to say that just because we don't know with certainty that it's not our job to do anything. I think it's our job to do our best to prepare for the future that we most expect. What I'd like to do is just briefly talk about leadership. And in his opening remarks, my opponent said, "Leadership always has an objective in mind." And, you know, that's true. And I would ask all of you to consider, here at Clowdon County, what that objective might My opponent has a long career as a captain of a Coast Guard ship, and for that, we owe you a debt of gratitude. And I would posit that that type of work requires a certain type of leader. It requires a leader who knows what that objective is, and who does what it takes in order to get the job done. You've got a crew of junior officers and other people whose job it is to take orders. Your job is to provide the leadership necessary to get to that goal, to get to the objective. I don't think the county works like that, or at least I don't think it works very well like that. When you're a county commissioner, you're one of three commissioners. You're a group of three commissioners among a larger group of elected officials. You're a county government who has to work with tribal governments, city governments, state government, federal government, other counties, other stakeholders. The objective of leadership, at least from my perspective, when you're a county commissioner, is to work with all of those other partners and all of those other stakeholders to make sure that they know that their voice is going to be heard, to make sure that everybody sitting around the table has a stake in the outcome, to make sure that they are going to be accountable for this, for this solution, because they have a stake in it. And I would posit to all of you that that requires a different commitment, that requires a different style of leadership, that requires different priorities, and those are my priorities. That requires different priorities, and those are my priorities.
And I think Charlie has another microphone on there.
Just while Mark's getting up there. I'll start a question off here because we don't have a lot of time. Both of you have a different view of this 0.02% that was reduced, the tax situation out there in the county. Could you both talk about it a little bit more and enlarge on what your thoughts are and where we might go with this, and also how we can encourage more business to this area that maybe not be coming or maybe coming, but it is?
Well, again, I don't believe that that sales tax cut was effective. It may have put a few cents or even a few dollars in the pocket of any individual citizen in the county. However, it puts a pretty significant hole in the county budget. And the way I look at it is that's not really doing much to stimulate economic activity, but the dollars that are not in the county coffers because of it could have been used to do things that would very much have had the potential to help stimulate economic activity. I mentioned briefly earlier the county's portion of funding for the WSU Extension Office, which is about half of what it was a few years ago. They have an economic development portion of their mission that they're not really able to carry out. Well, if they were providing coordination, support, assistance to the small agricultural community that is their value act, then they could become a much more significant driver or economy than they are now. If some of those dollars were targeted toward increasing funding for some community health challenges or working with the City of Port Angeles where many of those are centered, then we might be helping to create a more positive physical day-to-day environment. If we were working more closely with Peninsula College, perhaps we could use some of those funds to target more programs that provide job training for the types of jobs that we are looking for for the county's future. So I look at it as strategic investments that we could have made but now aren't able
Around a million dollars is not a trivial amount of money in my book to leave in family budgets or in individual citizens. That money is theirs, and I believe that any government, county government in particular, should only burden the economy to the extent necessary for an effective government to do the kinds of things that county government is legally authorized to do. There are many, many things that the county government is not legally authorized to do. And so fundamentally, I take a non-distributionist point of view in complying with the law and doing the kinds of things that county government does. I think choices are always best left in individual citizens' hands to do with their money as they see fit. And I dare say that two tenths of a penny might be a little bit better rate of return than you can get on a money market instrument in any of our local banks. That's courtesy of the Federal Reserve System because they've set interest rates so low. So savers are penalized. But I'm going to be looking as well at the personal property tax levy. I mentioned this in another forum earlier this week, or was it last week? I'm losing track of time, about how we can take the county personal property tax levy, not real property, but personal property, which falls heaviest on businesses, down to zero. That, of course, doesn't obviate personal property taxes for state schools and other taxing districts and so forth, but if we can target some help to businesses so that their bottom line improves to whatever extent possible, that's a good thing. That's more money left in the hands of a business owner to reinvest or do whatever's best for that person's business. So the focus here is on the necessary job of government, but only that, and leave the choices in the hands of individual citizens.
So you're both not just the only ones on the ballot, but we have a pretty significant issue in Squim that's on the ballot, and that is our school bond. And the school bond is put together to build a new elementary school to replace Helen Heller, which received an F rating in this facilities report, to upgrade our kitchens that have the equipment that may have been around from the Coast Guard before you were there, Jim, and then also to provide more permanent rooms for our students over there as we meet with McLeary in 2018, too. So I'd like to hear from both of you on where you stand on our first school bond. I am fully supportive of the Squim School Bond, and as a matter of fact, while the county doesn't have much impact over how our schools are going to be funded, as a county commissioner, I believe that you do have a bowling pulpit, and I believe that with regard to education and supporting our schools and actively supporting those school bond issues, that that's a pretty appropriate place to use it. Everybody who I've spoken with, who owns a business or is engaged in the county economy or is a parent, has a vested interest. Everybody in the county has a vested interest in strong schools, and it's not having well-supported schools is actively detrimental to our efforts at the county level and at other levels to bring businesses here. So it is absolutely appropriate to focus on it. It's absolutely appropriate to be vocally supportive, and it's important for county commissioners and others to do everything we can to help the public understand why passing those bond issues is absolutely crucial.
I do believe that we need to provide the appropriate dollars for our school facilities and for teachers and textbooks. That's beyond question. That's what we do as a society to keep our society ongoing, educate our younger folks. The people in the Squim School District have made it pretty evident, both for the SARC two tax levies and for two school bond levies in prior years, over the last couple of years, that they're really not interested in tax levies. The SARC levy and the school bond levy, the last attempt, came close to the 60% threshold. So it is beyond dispute that there are some facility needs in the Squim School District and the Port Angeles School District as well. I don't think there's too much question of that. The question is, what's the appropriate amount of tax burden on the community to solve those facility problems in really, really practical terms, Brandino? And I wish I could be there tomorrow night. I've got a thing that prevents me from being at the meeting tomorrow night at Squim. I need to understand personally how running the same play is going to work this time when it didn't the last time. That's a question in my mind. We cannot afford another levy failure. That's a headline that we all don't need to see because businesses look at that. Folks that want to relocate to our county look at that. Those headlines are not read by just folks here in the county. They're read by people all over the country and perhaps even the world. So whatever we do, we need to make sure that we're successful in providing for the essential facility needs. So I'm really interested in hearing how running that play is going to be successful this time because I do support the capital needs of any of our school districts in Clough County.
So we're kind of running short on time. We should probably wrap things up, but are you willing to maybe stick around for a few minutes afterwards? Great, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.